Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are now calling this school committee meeting to order Monday, November 6, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. There will be no need for an executive session. Let's see, who can I call on to? Madam Knight, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, nothing at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
No report at this time. Be meeting in two weeks.
Any questions or concerns from the committee? Seeing none. School building needs, Mr. Stevens.
We'll be meeting in two weeks. No report.
Questions? Seeing none. Policy committee, Mr. Horgan not with us yet?
He is.
Okay. Student support committee, Dr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's not a report, I just have a couple of comments. I certainly want to commend interim superintendent Thompson for bringing on board an assistant superintendent of color and also principal Braga at the high school. And I also want to commend principal Braga for bringing in at least one teacher of color, a Spanish teacher over at the high school. I cannot get a number, I don't know if we have a number of how many educators of color we brought in into the system this year. Hope I can get that number soon. But I certainly want to say thank you for that. I also would like to add that I pray that every person involved in making decisions is using all the proper policies and procedures and relying on evidence-based strategies to make their final decisions and that the data can be easily tracked so that we can be certain that we're doing the best, making the best decision for the benefits of all our students. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Any questions? Seeing none. Personnel subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. Student representative.
Good evening, fellow school committee members. It is so great to be with you all again today. The Thanksgiving game is coming up, and to start off the countdown, our Thanksgiving canned food drive and competition with Lemonster is beginning tomorrow, November 7. Last year, we won our canned food drive, so we're hoping Fitchburg High can continue the streak. Along with this, the class officers of 2024 for both Fitchburg and Lemonster are teaming up to sell T-shirts for each school. The designs on the shirt are all the same, but Fitchburg will be selling a red version and Lemonster will be selling a blue version. Ten of Fitchburg High School seniors also went to Memorial Middle School and on Friday, no, sorry, I forget the date, and held a presentation explaining what Fitchburg High is and what the culture is like to eighth-grade students. Our gear-up services have also been working extremely hard to ensure that our seniors have the opportunity to tour colleges. And so far, students have attended UMass Amherst, Boston University, and UMass Lowell and more. Goodrich High School recently had their open house and are also having a video gaming tournament on November 17 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is free for all Goodrich Academy students, but it's $5 to play and $3 to watch. Memorial Middle School had their student forum with superintendent Thompson where they spoke with him about their school and any concerns or thoughts they had. Students started their Action Civics project and supply drive for animal shelters as well. Longjo Middle School had a very eventful month. So far, seventh graders had the opportunity to see The Lightning Thief at Hanover Theater in October, after I'm pretty sure having the chance to read the book in the sixth grade. Longjo had their spirit week last week and are also looking forward to their fall dance coming up on November 16 this month. In addition, South Street has a Learning Center Playground grand opening on November 17 at 3:30 p.m. where they are hosting canned food drive for their school's food pantry. If you plan on going, they're accepting non-perishable items and prepackaged meals. And lastly, since this is our third year of being in school and since COVID, I wanted to comment on the positive changes I have seen within my school. I recognize a huge shift in the school environment in comparison to previous years. The past two years of school have been extremely dry, and honestly, I felt a huge disconnect when it came to school events and participation from students. For example, it was hard to get people to join clubs, and nobody was involved in spirit weeks like they were prior to COVID. After being in school for two months now, I can confidently say I've seen a great change. I can only really speak for the clubs I am in, and within both, I've witnessed a jump in participation for both the Black Student Union and Mock Trial. Last year was hard to even get 10 people to show up, and now more people want to get involved. Not only this, but kids are starting to create more clubs as well. I've seen more flyers on the walls and more students asking about when clubs are meeting. For example, we now have a dance club that just started this week. I've also seen more participation during spirit weeks, football games, and school events in general, which makes me very proud as a senior who wants to keep traditions alive. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee of October 16.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, yes, thank you. Communications. You have none, right? Me, none. Anyone wishing to make public comment?
Jaclyn Wedgey, Fitchburg resident, speaking on agenda item 23-314. I started making a list of athletes who have been injured by artificial turf or spoken out because teammates of theirs were, including any serious non-contact injuries. Aaron Rodgers, Matt Milano, Patrick Mahomes, David Bakhtiari, J.C. Tredder, Zaire Franklin, Eddie Jackson, Jadeveon Clowney, Kirk Cousins, Nick Chubb, Kendrick Bourne, Jason Kelsey, Nick Bosa, George Kittle, Debo Samuel, Jimmy Garoppolo, Cooper Cup, Emmanuel Mosley, Sampson Abukam, Aaron Banks, D.K. Metcalf, J.C. Jackson, Sterling Shepard, Matt Shoud, Seth Joyner, D.J. Reed, C.J. Mosley, Randall Cobb. I could go on, there's many more, but I only have five minutes. Artificial turf is banned in World Cup games. It's banned in Boston, and if Bill S. 2057 passes, it will soon be illegal in all of Massachusetts. So why did Fitchburg decide to install artificial turf when it will injure our kids and also expose them to forever PFAS chemicals for which no safe threshold exists? The reason given was so more people can use the field, including walkers. Walkers who won't risk injury. Let's be honest, this is a result of gerontocracy. The geezers want to go over to Crocker Field for their morning walks and don't want their shoes to get muddy. Geezers vote, students are minors and don't. Geezers have money to donate to political candidates, students don't. Why do you think we have a senior center but not a youth center? It's time to start caring about our kids. Why don't you take the $169,000 and use it to start the process of setting up a youth center or a community center open to all ages? Take back the $2 million in ARPA money allocated for this and use it for a youth center or for sewer separation work that is a prerequisite to paving our roads, or something else useful that will help and not hurt people. I know a lot of you are geezers, and I'm not young either, but let's think about our kids for once. Our guiding principle should be, first, do no harm. Candidate Tozier Robbins has informed me that Crocker Field doesn't even belong to the school department or the city but is privately held. We shouldn't be using taxpayer money to benefit a private entity and to benefit artificial turf salespeople. And $169,000 for a bid process? We have a purchasing department to handle bills. It's like you think money grows on trees. Look outside, it doesn't.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have our last four school improvement plan presentations and MCAS presentations. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Mrs. Hannah Tumber, the principal at South Street Early Learning Center, and her team.
Do you have my slides?
I do. One second.
Well, as he gets that ready, I will introduce myself. My name is Hannah Tumber. As John said, I'm the interim principal at South Street Early Learning Center. This is my third year in the district, and I'll let my peers introduce themselves.
Good evening, I'm Jaclyn Novato. I'm the interim assistant principal. This is my eighth year at Fitchburg.
Hi, I'm Laura Douglas. I'm the early childhood administrator at South Street Early Learning Center, and this is my 17th year in the district. And I'm very fortunate, a lot of my teachers came tonight, so. Awesome. All right, so as everyone knows, last year was our first year having South Street Early Learning Center open. We have a lot to be proud of, we have a lot to show. We had, just two examples here, we had Mrs. Thomas's class win the top reading award through United Way in the winter last year, as well as two students who actually placed first and third in the winter reading challenge in Central Mass. And then, over the summer, we really honed in on making sure our classrooms felt welcoming and creating a place for all of our students. So we took the time and just were really thoughtful about how our classrooms looked. So this is just an example of how we were able to utilize, you know, some of the funds we had to make sure our classrooms felt welcoming for all students. Getting into accountability information, we don't have MCAS like your elementary schools do, however, we do have some other data points to show you. So at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, we do DIBELS testing, which is essentially looking at early literacy skills. This shows you our progress, this is for the last year's school year, over the course of the year. So as you can see, we made some really, really great gains. We definitely still have some work to do, but we're very, very proud of the work that our teachers and staff have done to support our students. Next, we have our iReady progress monitoring. So this is an assessment we took in the middle of the year last year as well as the end of the year. So as you can see, the majority of our students fell one grade level below mid-year. Toward the end of the year, that 70% dropped to 31%. And I was looking at data today, looking at DIBELS data in our Title I teachers, and we started the school year off last year with, it was, we had 120 students in Title I. Of the 120 students, majority scored and read by the end of the year last year, which means they were significantly behind of those students who received Title I services. We only had 24 students at the end of the year, still, still below.
Could I just ask you to identify the lines, because you're familiar with these slides, but I have to read the top.
Yeah, absolutely.
What is good, what's bad, what color? You've got beautiful colors here. Help me out.
We have a printout, too. We have a printout of the slides in your packet.
Thank you.
So the colors below, so the green with the lines through means that they're mid or above grade level. The solid green means that they're early on grade level, and then yellow means one grade level below. So in the middle of the year, majority of our students, 70%, were scoring one grade level or below. Toward the end of the year, we were down to 31% of our students scoring below. So once again, still some work to do, but we saw a ton of growth last year, which is something we're really proud of and something that we're excited. We brought in two more Title I teachers this year to be able to service more students. So similarly, in math, we have the same graphics. So in the middle of the year, we had 23% of our students scoring at or above grade level, 77% of our students scoring below. Toward the end of the year, the 77% was brought down to 44%. So a lot of growth here, but still some, still some work to do, and we're, you know, working on that each and every day. So our school improvement plan goals, first and foremost, we want to make sure that all students have access to, equal access to high-quality instruction, so that way they can be able to think critically, communicate effectively, and understand and manage emotions. So some of the areas that we have focused on this year are creating strong tiered systems of support, so that way all of our students can, we can meet our students where they're at and be able to support them from there rather than putting all of our students in the same groupings. So between the different academic pieces of data that we have, we also have our, you know, teachers are getting together, receiving professional development as well as ongoing data analysis meetings. So we have ongoing data meetings to determine where our students are at and how we need to adjust instruction to make sure that all students are able to access it. So this is, for me, this is like a, like, my heart is like very, very passionate about social-emotional learning. So we came into the school year this year seeing that there was a gap in our students not having opportunities to be explicitly taught social-emotional skills. So we are now implementing Second Step, which is a social-emotional learning curriculum, and all of our students are receiving this curriculum every day, once again, so we can explicitly teach them the skills that they're, that they're lacking. So in addition to that, we have weekly meetings with our guidance team. Our guidance team is incredible. They reach out to families, they're working with students each and every day. We use a DESI screener, which is a screener to figure out where students are, what skills their strengths lie, and then what areas they may be struggling in. And then, you know, once again, ongoing training for teachers in these areas as well if they need it. So in terms of our third goal, professional development, we have brought district-wide PD that our teachers have received, they had a bunch at the beginning of the school year, we've had some throughout the school year as well. We had our director of social-emotional learning come in and do some training on Second Step, which is the curriculum that I mentioned before. We also are just doing weekly common planning time and making sure that we're bringing in resources and people who can support our teachers and give them the development that they feel that they need. So curriculum, we came last year as a team, administrators and our ILT, our guidance team, and we said, you know, what are some of the areas that we need more resources in, which could be curriculum, it could be staffing. And from there, we built our model out together, which I think was really, really fantastic. We were able to get Laura in, so she's now able to oversee our preschool and provide them the training, the professional development, and the support that they said they needed last year, so that's been wonderful. We also have looked at the, like, the building needs. We know that, you know, there was things we needed to do as well. So between all of us, we were able to kind of plan out all the different areas, because there are a lot of areas to plan and, you know, get those resources that we need to ultimately be the best for our kids. So effective family partnerships, this is, in addition to being a new school, we didn't have a super-strong PTO last year. It was year one, we were working on kind of rolling everything out, but this year, we jumped in. We have an awesome PTO, we have, we had 12 parents show up to our PTO meeting this last meeting. So they want to be involved, and we're welcoming and exciting, excited to have them involved. So that's definitely been a major component of, you know, increasing parent partnership, also just providing more workshops for families, finding resources that we can provide for them. Our guidance team is doing monthly workshops for parents to come in, and they focus the workshops on the needs of the students. So trying to give them as many opportunities as they can to actually be in our building, be with our staff, and see our students. Similarly, I would, cannot like praise our guidance team enough. They have so many connections with outside community agencies, and they work every day, they're on the phone with, you know, luck, they're on the phone with DCF. They're, we're trying to make sure that we're pulling from every entity we can because our kids need and they deserve the resources that are in the community. And that's it? Some questions?
Do you have a math coach?
We don't. We have had it posted, it was posted through the summer as well, and we only had one applicant apply, and they didn't have the right credentialing.
Because I see that's where, one of the areas that you need to bring up.
Yeah, and we don't have, we have four Title I reading teachers as well, so looking ahead, it would be great to get a Title I teacher in math as well.
You have a Title I teacher?
We have four Title I reading teachers.
What Title I teacher?
So looking ahead at getting a math coach and then pulling in some math Title I teachers to increase and improve our math data.
Okay.
So right now, we still have two openings at South Street.
Yep, two both coaches.
One for a literacy coach and one for a math coach. So those are two positions we still aren't able to hire for, or find.
Are those positions that are difficult to fill, not just in Fitchburg, but in most districts?
Yeah, I think because we're an early learning center, it's hard to find the right, the person with the right experience. So we've seen applicants apply, but their experiences in like middle school or upper elementary, and their toolkit is wonderful, but it's very different than what our kids need at an early learning center, so.
Too often, we pull student, coaches out of the classroom, and then you have to replace them with a classroom teacher, so you're...
Yeah, definitely.
Dr. Knight, talk.
Principal Hannah Tumber and your coworkers, I want to say thank you for everything that you do to help the students here in the Fitchburg Public School, from the bottom of my heart. Also, I just wanted to share with you that, and I know you probably know this, that studies are showing that when students are exposed to teachers of color, they become better problem solvers, they have better success in life, they become more creative. And I know that you are working hard at trying to, you know, close the academic achievement gap, if you will. What percentage of teachers of color do you currently have at South Street School? I mean, I've been asking for the numbers, and it seems like this is difficult, so I'm just wondering if you could just share that information with us.
I don't have the exact percentage, but we have, I would, I think it's between 15 and 17 staff of color who work at South Street.
Out of a total of how many staff?
About, close to 70.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment, how clear you were in your presentation, and very pleasant.
Thank you.
And I've been in the school a few times, and you can tell in the atmosphere, it's coming, it's vibrant, isn't it?
It is. That's really the, you know, hope that we want our kids to, you know, find their love of learning in kindergarten, so then that way it can follow in preschool, so it can follow it with them. And in order to do that, we need to make an inviting, exciting atmosphere for them. So we do focus a lot on that, and it's, it's really wonderful to see in our kids.
Yes, I know. And the, and the family participation, that sounds wonderful, too, so lucky students.
We're very, very fortunate.
Just, good question. So this is the second year. Do you have many students who are in pre-K who are now in K?
Yeah, we had, I believe it was around 80 students roll in from pre-K up to K this year, so we have 500 and like 38, 540 students right now, and around a little bit under 400 are in kindergarten, so a large, a large chunk of students.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. Principal Tumber, I want to, first, I want to say congratulations on the amount of work and effort you and your team are putting in for our students. So my question is, do you feel that you have the supports that you need to accomplish the goals, you know, to continue toward your goals?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's my concern.
Yeah, I was very nervous coming into this position, but I've been met with nothing but support from, you know, Superintendent Thompson, as well as Assistant Superintendent Cologne. You know, Mr. Roach was down this morning, spending time with me. I have Rowanda Manch, who's with me every day. Essentially, our sped administrator is out right now, so she's been filling in, so I, it's been really great. And I know that no matter who I go to, if they don't have the answers, they can get me the answer from someone else, so it's, it's been a very, very pleasant experience.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions for Hannah and her team?
No.
Do you want to do a plug for the, the opening ceremony for the playground?
Yes. So tomorrow, we're opening the playground officially for students. We actually met with our PTO and our, we talked about what we wanted to do for the month of November, and we came up with the idea to do a playground reveal. So we're going to, you know, make it a family fun event. We're going to open up the playground, that way kids can play, parents can see it, they are beautiful, they're, I'm so excited to see kids. Yeah, I'm so excited to see kids on them. And then we're also, our PTO feels strongly about creating a food pantry within our school that will live at our school, so we thought that would be a good way to be able to, you know, ask families if they can or if they would like to, to start, you know, building that up, because it's not something we have. So I think I sent you the email with the flyer. Please feel free, if you have any questions, reach out, and I hope we see you there.
What time?
It's 3:30 to 5:00.
November 17.
And just like, give a plug out to all of the PTOs in the city. They, all of our PTOs have just done a wonderful job supporting the schools and our students, so.
Absolutely.
PTOs, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to Rhangold Elementary School, and Principal Anna Hill is here with her team. Come on up.
All right, so I'm Anna Hill. I was able to speak with you all last year when Mr. Sparks was not able to, so it's good to be back. Thank you for having us. I've been in Fitchburg for three years. My first two years were as assistant principal at Rhangold, and then this year, I moved into the interim principal role.
I'm Judy Jollimorn. I am the student program support administrator at Rhangold, and I've been in the district this is my 27th year.
I'm Sarah Hopkins. This is my 12th year at Rhangold, and I'm the interim assistant principal.
So I guess I'll start by saying thank you to you, the school committee, for your part in bringing about some capital improvements that we've been able to enjoy this year, including refurbishing our stage and replacing the original curtain from 1969 when the building opened. I know we...
Time for a new curtain.
I know we have...
Sell off pieces of that for people who might want a little...
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have staff members that I'm sure would want to, you know, make Sound of Music-type uniforms from the curtain, but our custodial staff was so efficient in getting rid of the old that no one was able to make any souvenirs from that. So, you know, we've enjoyed presenting a more pulled-together look to visiting families and community members. For example, we had a representative from the district attorney's office who presented about internet safety to our students. And most recently, we kicked off our United Way Youth Venture Program using the stage. And we look forward to our 21st Century's production of Christmas Carol on the stage with fully functioning curtains this year. So another project that was completed was bringing our media center back into business as a fully functioning lending library with an up-to-date and diverse collection of books that can serve as a mirror for students to see themselves reflected in or as a window to see into the lives and experiences of others. We can all agree that Dr. Kim Cochran and our media teacher Helen O'Hara pulled this project together masterfully. And then, of course, we have our new playground with increased accessibility for all to be able to enjoy fun in the outdoors at Rhangold at recess. So Rhangold became a blended family as we opened our doors for the 22-23 school year, welcoming students from sister schools across the district and beginning our work building one-school culture with these youths and their families. As of the conclusion of that coming-together school year, our accountability rating report from DESI shows substantial progress toward targets and an accountability percentile of 33, and that's circled in the red there. As part of these scores, we saw an excellent level of achievement, especially in math, from our lowest-performing students, a subgroup made up of the lowest 25% of students in fourth and fifth grade, identified based on the prior year's MCAS performance. Another bright spot was in the area of attendance for all of our students. bright spot was in the area of attendance for all of our students. An area of opportunity lies in our progress towards attaining language proficiency for our multi-language learners. To this end, we've doubled the number of teachers on our ESL team from three teachers in 2021 to six teachers this year. We do continue to see new MLs or multi-language learners enrolling each week, it seems, many immediately upon arriving from other countries. So this will be an area to watch closely in the coming years. Zooming in to look closer at what made up each part of our accountability rating, ELA rises as an opportunity for improvement. To this end, we continue to work with core implementation consultants to support the proper use of high-quality instructional materials, namely HMH's Into Reading Program. We concentrate Title I intervention time in grades one, two, and three to help lay the groundwork for successful literacy skills before the gap has an opportunity to widen over multiple years. And we're encouraging reading through our before-mentioned library, mystery readers visiting classrooms, therapy pets listening to students read, and our upcoming Community Reading Day, to which I'm sure Mrs. Stone will invite you all to take part. Be ready. And this focuses on the growth, typical growth flow in language arts. Math, as mentioned earlier, was a bright spot with all but two subgroups maintaining or improving over the previous year. Our teachers are in year two of Eureka Squared Implementation and are gaining in comfort and efficacy with the program's lesson structure and materials. Math is also being incorporated into morning meetings each day, often with real-world applications. Title I math has expanded this year to reach more students and again, bring particular focus to the earlier grades to ensure foundational skills are solid before gaps have an opportunity to widen over the years. And again, this shows the growth in math. Due to redistricting, we have year one data for grade five science MCAS. To support growth in this area over time, we have departmentalized grade five math and science to increase consistency and efficacy with regard to the teaching of science. Students piloted the upcoming Science, Technology, Engineering MCAS Performance Assessment tasks, which are focused on real-life scenarios. So they would get advanced experience with this type of assessment item. And then we have the STEAM special, which is in year two of existence, and supplements the classroom teachers' work on science and technology standards. After the limitations of COVID, fall school days resumed in 2021, and that year's access assessment of language acquisition showed an impressive 89% of students going up a level. Though the outcome on that same assessment in 2023 showed 85% of students going up a level, which is a bit lower, it is important to note that language acquisition is cumulative. And so many of the students who went up in 2022 again went up in 2023. Also of note is the fact that in 2022 and 2023, numbers are at or above the pre-COVID level of 85%, which is what we had in 2020. So, or at least uneven keel from, for the pandemic. With the addition of many newcomers this year and last, the focus and determination of our ESL team remains steadfast. With attendance, you can see the huge impact that COVID quarantining requirements had on the 21 and 22 numbers and the banner 22-23 year that resulted from the loosening of those isolation guidelines. All subgroups exceeded their attendance targets. We continue to build school culture and pride, communicate the importance of attendance to students and caregivers, support our amazing guidance and clinical team and family liaison in the work of removing barriers that get in the way of attending school. So in conclusion, our school improvement goals really tie everything together that we've just talked about over the past few minutes. So high-quality tier-one instruction with learning targets and success criteria for teacher clarity, which research shows to have a very high impact on student achievement. Implementation of academic and social emotional supports. Professional development for staff that empowers them in their service to all students. Resource alignment to the district strategic plan and school improvement plan in the areas of purchasing, staffing investments, and investments of time. And finally, family engagement and two-way communication to ensure the sense of welcoming and belonging for all.
Questions for Ms. Hill?
Yeah, real quick. On achievement ELA, when it says recovery path, do you add some commentary to that? What does that mean when it says recovery path declined, improved below target, so forth, or no change?
So they have.
I'm happy, sorry, I'm happy to respond if you.
Sure. I was going to say DESI creates goals based on previous years. And, you know, the goal, maybe you can explain more succinctly than us.
Yeah, absolutely. So there are two pathways for recovery. Because of COVID, we are either on the path to, because of COVID, we're either on recovery target, which means that it is a target that is set lower because they are aware that there is still an impact to because of COVID, right? So the targets are not set at the typical rate that they would rate before COVID began. Does that make sense?
It does.
So there are two. So now, if you are on the path forward, that means you are back at the level of target setting that existed prior to COVID happening. So that's why they are two different.
So they're still under the adjustment of COVID?
So if it's listed, there is, so the lowest performing group is listed there as having a path forward. So that's already shifted. So it depends on what your subgroup is because it could, it could be in the same content area. You could actually, your subgroups could have different targets set.
Okay, so then for the ones that say recovery path, those are still?
Those are still COVID.
Lower.
Targets, adjusted for that, yep.
And then declined, is it still below the target for that adjusted goal?
It means they're on the recovery path, but they declined in that target.
Yep. So for that instance, they declined from the previous year by 1.1.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Hughes?
So where does that leave us in terms of our accountability rating with the state? You know what I mean? Because we're in that COVID, still in that COVID recovery kind of, you know what I mean?
So for Ryan Gold, they are not requiring any assistance from the state. So Ryan Gold does not. The only two schools that are requiring assistance from the state are McKay Elementary School and Longstrow Middle School.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question, not so much to the reportage, but these are the lower grades. And do you have trouble with students fixated with phones, personal phones? Are they so young that you can really work with them?
We're lucky in the lower grades that that's not one of our bigger problems. So you may have every once in a while, a student that you find out has texted home when they went to the bathroom. So now the parent is coming to pick them up all of a sudden and you don't know why or what the situation was. We hear about that maybe once a month or something like that.
I think you're very fortunate and these young people can learn. And we, people that have anything to do with education in the city, we're going to have to look seriously about what happens when they enter a higher-aged culture.
Right.
I think we change a higher-aged culture.
Yeah. And we did see a bit more of that when we have fifth grade added to our building. So, but with the younger kids, it's not much of an issue.
And I'd just like to comment on your chronic absenteeism. You exceeded the target in every area. And, you know, kids aren't going to improve unless they're there.
That's true. You can't do your best learning if you're not in the seats, right?
And just, I've been associated with Ryan Gold for 54 years. And I was the first year sixth-grade teacher there. And I remember that curtain.
It was snazzy.
A little past history. Gordon Erickson, who was the principal, and he required us, there were five teachers. Every month, we put on a program and you were assigned, whether it was Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and every, every teacher class, we had a program every month and the kids came into the cafeteria and we put on a program every month.
Taking notes?
Yeah.
Bring that back.
Times have changed, but.
Definitely.
We were mixed grades and.
That's great.
Yeah, we were K through six back then.
Gotcha, even wider span.
Thank you for your work.
Dr. Knight has a question?
Yes, Principal Anna Hill and your staff, I want to take the time also to thank you and to encourage you to continue to do everything in your, in your, in your hands so that the students in Pittsburgh can be taken care of. They can have a better opportunity, better future. Also, I have the same question. Study are showing, continue to show, that students become better problem solvers, they become more creative, they have better success in life when they're exposed to educators and administrators of color. At your school, what percentage or what number of educators of color do you currently have there?
We were, we were doing a quick calculation before we came up.
Yep.
So we two are at about 15%. This past year, we were able to add, or over the past two years, we were able to add a fifth-grade teacher, a fourth-grade teacher. We already had a third-grade teacher. We already had a second-grade teacher. Many paraprofessionals were added in addition to a clinical interventionist. So we have representation at all grade levels and in all departments, which is, which is great, but it could still be better, of course. And we do try to recruit, you know, and just find the, the people who apply don't always kind of, you know, meet it, meet our goals to hire a diverse staff.
And of course, you want to make sure that they have all the qualifications that are required, definitely, you know?
Of course.
And also, I wanted to say thank you so much for changing that 54-year-old curtain, you know? That curtain is almost as old as I am. And I find that, you know, I feel better, I look better when I change the old stuff, too, you know?
That's right.
Thank you so much for changing those curtains.
It's certainly a source of pride, yes.
Mr. Hughes?
So being that, you know, one of my primary responsibilities in the district for over 22 years was attendance. And I'm looking at your exceeded your targets. So can you share at least one, you know, how did you, in all, in all areas, you know, share at least one thing that you did to kind of get you these results? Because studies have shown, the kids show up, they learn.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So this, this is very intriguing to me. I love it. I'm like, like what? You know?
So we are at the curb and at the buses greeting them every single morning, every single student, probably 85% by name. We're getting there. So I'd like to think that that's a big part of it, making those personal connections, students knowing that we care. You know, we, we talk about attendance every week in our weekly welcome, like video announcements. Students know what the rates were for each grade as far as the past week's attendance. This year, our data platform, Open Architects, has a dashboard where you can get the top, I mean, it lists every single classroom in a row as far as who has the highest attendance. So we'll publicize the top five classrooms for their attendance. Mr. Sparks spent a lot of money on ice cream last year for the grade levels with the highest attendance. So maybe ice cream.
Ice cream, it's ice cream.
So those are just a few things that come to mind.
And I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, I, this came from a Weight Watchers meeting, but somebody was talking about how they came to the Weight Watchers meeting the next week because somebody said, I'll see you next week. And so I was like, oh, we could do that at school. So I started at the end-of-day announcements when we call students to, you know, move to their dismissal locations, you know, turn to a friend and say, see you tomorrow. Sometimes I just say, see you tomorrow. I'll get on buses to remind them of their expectations and I'll say, I'm going to see you tomorrow, right? So maybe that's part of it, too.
That's, that's creating a culture, you know, creating a culture and expectation of, you know, and seeing that your staff, seeing it coming from your leadership team is extremely important. So I, it just excites me how you're changing the culture and the expectation of that. And I witnessed you all firsthand because I dropped my grandson off. So I see you guys every morning. He takes off running and he, you know, he gets there, says, good morning. You know, so that says to me, he's excited to get up to go to school the next day. So I appreciate you for creating that culture of a sense of belonging for the kids. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick, I just wanted to add, yes, Jimmy Kazas wrote a book called Culturize. And I want to share that with you because he has some wonderful strategies to continue to do that because we want to be able to retain the students that are coming now. So you may want to take advantage of that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Strong. Moving on. Next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Sue Tingas from the principal of McKay Elementary School and her team.
Much shorter than everybody else. Hi, I'm Sue Tingas. I'm the principal at McKay Elementary and I have my team with me tonight. Joyce Chapman, Assistant Principal.
Kat Raven, Special Agent Administrator.
Kate Murray, Assistant Principal.
So a lot like the other schools were saying, that we have combined schools, students from across the city with the redistricting. At McKay, we had a little extra added twist of taking South Street Elementary School and McKay Arts Academy and combining those two staffs. So last year, we did a lot of work on creating culture for our staff as well as our students, a new sense of belonging to a new school. So we've done some team, team-building activities at different functions at our school. So at the top there, you can see our fifth-grade group dressed as Barbie and Ken and all those other, went with that flow this year. We've added some incentives for students to increase positive behavior, which is, we have office, positive office referrals. I'm sorry, I forgot my notes, so I'm trying to go by, by, by sheer memory. So we have positive office referrals, we have dragon tickets that when students do something either kind for another person or they've tried their best, they get this ticket and the tickets get put in a bucket. And at the end of the week, we draw our names and kids get to win different prizes. But they love like saying, hey, I just helped so-and-so with their books. Can I get a dragon ticket? You're like, absolutely. Or I just scored 20 extra points on a, on a test. And then can I get a dragon ticket? And sometimes you're like, you know what? You get two dragon tickets, like, great job. So it's stuff like that. Then we all, through our MCAS and our, this past year was our baseline. So we decided to really try to get together as one community. And our PTO and helped us raise some money. And we bought staff T-shirts. So everybody has the same shirt. We had a little bit of a whiteout at a, at a, at a school staff meeting. And on the back, they all say, believe. That comes from, I don't know if anyone watches Ted Lasso.
Nice.
All right.
Kind of comes from Ted Lasso, where he does the believe in perseverance. So that's kind of our process, our thought process this year going on. We believe all our students can achieve highest levels. And we, as teachers and staff, are going to persevere to make sure that we reach that goal. So we did reach 54% and substantial progress towards our targets. Sadly, we only went up one percentage point, but that is our baseline. And when, if you look at, at schools that are in a recovery period, it takes anywhere between three and five years. So we're beginning this journey and we hope I, we'd like to see it in three. But, you know, we're beginning our journey to help improve the students of McKay Elementary. know, we're beginning our journey to help improve the students of McKay Elementary. Without my notes, it's really tiny. So we do have lots of, as I called it to the staff, pockets of sunshine. No, I'm all set, thank you. We have some pockets of sunshine and things to celebrate as well as a lot of work ahead of us. But one of our pockets of sunshine was our math scores, where we got some, you know, some four out of four points there. Our English language learners made some substantial growth and they also received four out of four of those points. And our chronic absenteeism, we got four out of four points, which these lovely ladies, my team here, will talk a little bit more in-depth when we get to those slides.
So as was mentioned, we definitely have a long way to go. I don't think any of us standing up here are satisfied with what we have. We are, you know, on the way. We consider kind of us in year two. We've put two very important structures in place for ELA to make sure this happens. We're in year two of an early literacy grant, which is through the Department of Education. We have all of our first-year students participating in that. Overall, there are 37 teachers participating. It's helped us differentiate our, both our professional development opportunities as well as it is a big focus in our professional learning communities. We have two consultants that come in weekly and work with our coaches and model and/or co-teach and give feedback to teachers kind of on an ongoing basis. And we have a large focus on using data to guide our practice, which is very important to what we think will help us kind of move forward beyond kind of where we are now. We just feel we have a lot of belief that we can do better than what we have here on the screen. Excuse me. This grant is a specific evidence-based, really to help us have inclusive culturally responsive teaching. So every week, we are delivering these practices. We're also participating in our reading implementation grant, which is a huge focus on Tier One. It's been mentioned at some of the other schools. It's a focus that all means all and exposing all students to high-quality instruction in the general education environment. We can do this with a focus and we know we can achieve the achievement that we want in ELA in third grade and above when we are focusing, which we are, on an intentional planning process, student discourse, having set learning targets and success criteria in every classroom, every single day. It kind of sets the path for students in terms of what they need to learn.
So if you look up there, our students with disabilities have zero points for ELA. So we wanted to figure out why. So we dug into the data and we noticed that writing was our biggest challenge. And looking even further, that was a challenge across the entire school, not just students with disabilities. So our ILT, our instructional leadership team, got together and they created a school-wide writing goal, which everybody is using, students with and without disabilities, and they're already starting to implement that now.
So we had some opportunities for success in our math achievement. We, as you can see, our aggregate group, as well as our subgroups, all exceeded the target. We attribute the growth in some of the practices that we've implemented. For example, our coaches have worked with our teachers in very purposeful planning sessions. They have worked on the structure of a lesson as well as the components of a lesson. We have also implemented practices with a daily math acceleration sheet to target skills. These are skills that students are struggling with, so we continually work on them to make students more affluent in those practices. We increased support for our struggling learners with some Title I math and those teachers are using a very solid program, Tang Math. Those teachers actually received some additional training in that this year and are feeling really comfortable with using that program. We're committed to learning our math facts with automaticity. Last year, we had an opportunity to celebrate that with a math marathon and kids were really excited to share what they knew.
So we were very excited that our students with disabilities got all four points in this area. Again, looking at that data, though, we noticed that comprehending our math word problem seemed to be what tripped us up the most. So we started to add math vocabulary and math comprehension goals to students' ELA IEPs. So just a way to kind of hit those areas of need across all content areas.
Can I ask a question regarding the difference between the achievement in ELA? And that's kids with a second language, right? English is their second language? No, it's not?
Depends on what subgroup.
Okay. I guess my question was, why is there such a wide chasm between achievement in math and the other one, the ELA? I mean, you know what I mean? You're not making, you're not hitting any target. Math, you're exceeding the targets, right? Can you, I don't know, I guess I'm just asking if you have an opinion about that?
Yeah, so ELA, just as a group, is considered, that would be like reading, writing, literacy, right?
And you have to be able to read to do math, right?
Well, that's true.
Read well, I mean.
Right? And I think also, we haven't, we just put our HMH, our new, our reading program, we're in year three of that, or I think we're in year three of that. So that was a reading program that we put in place and now we're working on kind of to make sure that it's being implemented with fidelity in all the classrooms. So to make sure that we had high-quality curriculum that every single teacher was using and understands how to use, we're in that process. But yes, we have, that's one of our biggest concern, right? We're looking at kind of third graders. If they're not able to read, I mean, that's really the foundation for everything, everything that they do. And that's the other reason why the DESI grant is incredibly important, because now we are able to build the foundation, starting at the Early Literacy Center, as you heard earlier, and then beginning to build all of those skills from pre-K all the way, hopefully to get them to third grade and be able to read. Because as, anytime they're struggling with any of that, they will not be able to kind of continue on in math or any other subject area.
Thank you.
So science is an area of opportunity for us. We recognize that we were struggling in June. As you can see, we did not move toward our target in science, but we've already begun to take steps to remedy this. We've reached out to our science director to do some coaching with our teams. She's already met with them a couple of times and they have discussed student responses, they discuss implementing routines for responding to science questions and strategies they use and hopefully we can address some of the struggles there. Our fifth grade staff has departmentalized and therefore there are fewer teachers teaching science, but they're really working on becoming more experts in the teaching of science. We also really took a close look at our staffing and who would be best at team teaching together and we made some shifts in that. So we're hopeful that some of the shifts that we've made will put us on a better path for this year.
Our students with disabilities was, the subgroup was just too small for any reporting to happen, but like you said, we had our science director, Jess Daudelski, come and talk to our programs, so our guided learning program and our pathways programs, which are our most neediest students at McKay. And she talked to them about Gizmo videos and how to differentiate, how to use some good hands-on activities with science to help our students that learn in a more multisensory way.
Back to ELA. I was just going to follow up because now we're looking at kind of our growth and obviously our growth we need to work on as well and look at what our opportunities are. But one example I was going to give you of what we're actually changing in the classroom, so these are kind of instructional routines that we are now enforcing as an expectation through our walkthroughs and our teacher feedback. This is an example that will probably maybe highlight a little bit of what we're changing because we see where we need to grow. We were seeing teachers last year do read alouds, right? So you're talking about first, second, third grade, you're doing read alouds. So those are not allowing the student to engage with the curriculum, with the work. We're not hearing their oral language, there isn't oral discourse, it's just the teacher reading the book. So we've made significant changes this year where the student is participating, is actively reading. And it sounds like a small change, but when a student is actively engaging in the reading and doing the reading, maybe reading to a pair and then a partner and then responding to that reading, they are, they are learning the material in a much different way. They're actually engaging with the material. So I think we believe very firmly that those kinds of tweaks, which might sound very small, are very, very big to a young child. These grants have really helped us increase the routines that we're doing that we think can make a huge difference and you'll see the growth that we need, starting at the younger grades. We're having a huge focus on turn-in talks, which are, you know, you turn to a partner and you're using more verbal discourse to kind of capitalize on using oral language, using texts, engaging with texts in a different way than just having a student kind of sit back. So we are confident that we are going to see some significant changes, but it just, it takes time. And a lot of it, too, I don't think was mentioned before, we have veteran teachers and then we have a whole large number of new teachers. So we've really had to differentiate how we do professional development specifically around reading, because you have a new teacher and we need to kind of teach them kind of what the curriculum even is, how to develop and plan and then deliver a lesson with some of the veteran teachers that we really need to help kind of make these changes that we're talking about. So that's been a challenge for us and, but we know that in order to get the staff to move to where we want them to go, we need to make sure that they're engaged in the professional learning communities that we are offering. So hopefully, we are on the path and we feel, we feel very confident that we will see significant changes when we're standing here a year from now.
To address our low growth in the students with disability area, we've started using writing strategies like the Racer strategy. We've been showing students how to add that to their own graphic organizers. We've been having our speech and language pathologists push into our classrooms so they can, into our writing classrooms specifically, to work on language goals, but in the inclusion setting. And we sent all of our special ed teachers to Orton Gillingham Training to make sure that all of our kids are getting that multisensory explicit approach to reading.
So to assist with growth in mathematics, we've implemented some tutorial supports for kids. We've had some of our second language learners participating in small group tutoring. We've also had some MCAS tutoring that we've provided for students. We're expecting that all of our efforts with that extra support, as well as with the Title I extra support, is going to show some more growth in the upcoming year.
So we did a little better with our students with disabilities in math, but we noticed that they still needed more exposure. So we have a math acceleration block daily. We also have sent two special ed teachers to the brand-new Orton Gillingham for math training this year. Again, that's all based on multisensory explicit teaching.
And again, I forgot my notes, so I apologize. I had a couple of really great points to show, but I think just the numbers itself, even though, you know, we, our students made some pretty significant progress. The change was 8.9. So that's pretty good progress. I have six, seven, seven ESL teachers. We have a population of 800 students, so we are the second largest to the high school. So with those teachers, we were able to put one or two at each grade level. So I think that is definitely making an improvement for our students who come to us speaking a different language.
Oh, sorry.
So for special education and our L students, we've been working with our SED and L teachers so right away to collaborate with all MCAS accommodations and access accommodations from day one, instead of waiting until the last minute and realizing, oh, we need to make changes.
So we exceeded our target on attendance and worked really hard towards this target. We had attendance meetings on a regular basis, multiple times per month. These meetings were very supportive to families. We offered whatever services we could to get their children in school more often. We offered mock support, we offered DCF support, we offered guidance counselors, nurses came. You know, it truly was a team approach with the goal of how can we help you help your child. Attendance letters were mailed home on a regular basis when a child's absences were greater than 10% of the time enrolled in school. That is also a practice that is continuing again this year. Regular phone calls were made when students were absent for some consecutive days or when absences were reaching that 10%.
So we have our school improvement goals. The first one is around math. We want to make sure that they show at least one year's worth of growth. The same with the ELA. They both are showing one year's worth of growth in their ability to access the grade level tents, text. The growth will be measured with the MCAS proficiency. Hopefully, it raises by at least 10%. Our ELL students, we also want them to have one year's worth of growth on iReady by the end of the school year and 80% would reach their target on access, on the access testing, which is specific to just our ESL students. We also want to hold our admin team accountable, so we'll conduct an audit of us using all the, you know, the resources, a strategic plan to ensure that they're aligned to our school improvement plan as well as the district plan. And then our number five is that we are, we're going to build a system that we engage all students, families and staff to incent a welcoming and belonging for all. And what we've done with that is that each month, a grade level takes, like, so starting in January, it'll be grade one. They're going to do a family engagement night just for grade one, then grade two has it, grade three, four and five. We also do, excuse me, we also do a couple of whole-school family engagement nights throughout the year, which are very well-attended. It's really happy to see when we have, you know, a thousand ice creams to give out to students who come for open house and you only have about 200 left at the end of the night, you know it was a successful night. So that is it and we're open for questions, but before I take questions, can I just extend an invitation? I know we spoke a lot, but I would like to invite everyone from school committee, if you'd like to come and get a tour of the school, walk-through and a little more of a one-on-one with any one of us or all of us. I'd like to extend that invitation at any time. And now we can take questions.
Have any of that ice cream left?
We might, but it might be a little frosty by now, I don't know.
Stevens, we'll find you.
We'll get you one. Yes.
What, one group of students that I haven't heard anything about tonight is people, students that are very quick learners. And how do you deal with that?
We do try to give grade Tier One instruction, so at that point, we can decide who is an accelerated learner and who would be a learner that needs more help. So we do have Title I for that, but for our students who are more of accelerated learners, we have had teachers come to us and tell us about it. They show us data, you know, everything's driven by data and we see that and we give them chances. Last year, we sent a first grader who was really good in math and who went to a second grade classroom. So those two teachers partnered to make sure that he was getting everything he needed and it was being challenged enough. And eventually, that student just moved into second grade.
Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Again, I want to, you know, just commend you and your team for a job well done with the absenteeism. I can't, my mind is just trying I can't, my mind is just trying to process, you know, what's happening with the parental buy-in, you know, to, to what's happening. And so that's some really, really exciting news, as you all know as well as anyone, you invest into kids early, get them in there and get them to learn. Studies have shown that, you know, crime and all that stuff begin to get further and further away. So I guess, I guess my concern is, is being able to monitor that data going forward. You know, the, the things that you're doing now, making sure when they get into third grade, that that's not lost. You know what I mean? And, and the, you know, because a lot, a lot of the stuff gets lost in the third grade, third and fifth grade, things like that. And so, so using the, the information and the data that you have now to address that going forward, right? And so some districts, even years ago, there was a district in Chicago, right? We used third grade data to build jails. So how can we use this data to improve and, and maybe get them in the, in the higher tier of learning, you know? That's all. Just, just a thought.
Schools mentioned, we have an amazing guidance team that's also looking at that data all the time. One of the really neat things that we did this year is assigned a guidance counselor to grade levels. And so now those guidance counselors really know those kids well. And so they know when, you know, there's, there's an illness that is going to keep a child out for a bit, or when there's a family that needs support or...
And the first grade guidance council will next year become the second grade and then the third grade. So they're going to know them, they're going to grow up with them, and then the fifth grade will start back over and we start building that rapport with families. So we're hoping that that will continue on.
But they're invested in the data too.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I just had a thought. I've, I've observed different times, not only tonight, but previous to tonight, that there seems to be a wonderful cooperation amongst your teachers. And you can feel it and you can hear it and it is uplifting. So again, with the, just a thought that you might somehow integrate when you do pass, when these children do pass on from your school to the next level school, perhaps with sufficient time, not just once or twice meeting, you know, you might meet with the, with the teachers to whom they're going.
We, we definitely hope to build some type of partnership with the two middle schools as well as reach back for our first grade teachers to partnership with the Early Learning Center.
It would be helpful to the...
I'm sorry, Rosemary. If I do have done, I think it's...
Oh, I am done.
Are there any positions that remain vacant that would be a big help if they were filled?
We just filled our library media specialist position. Well, knock on wood, let's hope he signs the actual contract, but that just went out to him today. So we hope within two weeks that that position will be filled. And I think after that, we're, we're, we're full.
And the other thing...
Yes, we always need building subs. We don't have...
As a retired librarian, I'm happy to hear that. I just want to say, and this applies to, to all the presentations and even to Crocker, who will be coming up after you, is that I'm, I'm impressed that every school and every team recognize the areas that, that need improvement and you're not embarrassed to say where we're, what, what needs to be done to make it better. And I think one of the things that one of you mentioned earlier is the fact that you actually went to the, the level of rearranging teachers who work together to, to get a better team, not that, I'm not saying the other teams weren't good, but, but the people who had the skills to complement what the other teachers had so that the students would, would do better. And I'm, I'm impressed that, that the cooperation exists, not only with your administrative team, but with the teachers in Paris, that everybody agreed that this would be best for the students.
Yeah, we made about 20, 22 teacher moves in June and we hired fifth grade workers to help us move. I wouldn't recommend hiring fifth grade workers, but it was fun. The kids enjoyed moving their teachers from room to room. It was a nice few days where everybody would just help each other out and it, hopefully it will pay off.
I think you've got a good start, particularly with your absenteeism. As Mr. Hughes has said, you can't, you can't teach them if the kids aren't there and you have a good team and you have a good plan. And so I think you're going to be very successful. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think we have Mr. Horgan and then Dr. Knight has one more.
Okay.
Principal Tingas, I think you nailed it when you first started of saying, you know, there's a lot of things to celebrate, but there's a lot of, you know, room for improvement, a lot of things to, to keep working on, you know, especially being in the turnaround and the accountability classification that the school's in. It's a presentation that I'm sure my colleagues paid close attention to. It's certainly that I, one that I was paying close attention to. And I think you almost understated, there's a lot to celebrate here and there's a lot of really incredible work. And especially considering that context that the school's in, this is really, really encouraging. I think the prioritization is there. If there's anything that you can't have second or half measures on, it's absenteeism and attendance. So I just think this is really great steps in the right direction and I hope that momentum continues and we keep seeing this progress. So it's really great. And I know there's been so much transition at this particular school in the last two, five years. And it's been a lot of time since I've seen something really, really encouraging coming out of this school. So this is really, really great. Hope you all are very proud of yourselves and keep it up.
Thank you.
Yes, Principal Suzanne Tingas.
Yes.
Again, same thing, I want to just encourage you to continue to do all that you do for our students here in Fitchburg. I do have a question. I don't know, maybe Superintendent Thompson, if you don't have the answer. So what is the minimum number of students needed in the, the various subgroups for the scores to be tracked? Because some of the scores are not tracked.
Yeah, so I think it's 30.
It's 30. Well, I saw the, the, in one of the categories, the, the students with disabilities had 37
and it wasn't tracked, you know? And then I saw one of the, you know, the, the, the black African-American students was like 43 and it wasn't tracked. So I don't know, maybe it's a higher number. I don't know what that number is, you know? So that's something that I would like to, to learn. So, you know, you know, you don't have to answer right now, you know, we can find that. Also, you talk about how you're trying to do everything in your, in your power to be able to help your teachers to be, you know, improve their, their pedagogy. And I just wanted to mention, I mentioned this before, I'm not sure if you were here the, the last time I mentioned it, that the, the Department of Education have a system of evaluation called calibration, in which, you know, a, a, a group of teachers get together, I mean, evaluators get together and, you know, come up with positive and meaningful comments, you know, to share with the teachers, you know, that would help them improve their pedagogy and hence help improve students' learning and that's what we are looking forward to. So that's what I wanted to share with you. And, you know, if we find that number at some point, you know, you can give them...
It's 30. I just wanted to make sure, but it is 30. You have to have at least 30 in a subgroup for it to count.
As I said, I saw one of the groups, the 37, and it was not recorded. And then none of the, the group of students that are under the category of African-American slash blacks, and some of them had 43.
Do you know what category it is?
You know, all of them, I saw like the, you know, like the blacks, African-Americans, the, the scores were not tracked. And I know the numbers were low, but I don't know what that limit is, you know, so...
Yeah, so African-American was 26 for ELA achievement. So in order for that to count, it needs to be up to 30.
At, at one of the other schools, I know I saw 43 somewhere.
So it would, if it's over 30, it would count.
And it wasn't counted. But again, we can, you know, you don't have to spend time with that. I know we have a long meeting and somebody has to present.
Any other questions, Dr. Knight? I don't mean to cut you off. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Go ahead, you can clarify that.
Sorry, I just wanted to share that starting next year, the subgroups will be 20. So some of those subgroups that are currently, you know, in that in-between, we will be able to see data for that.
Last but not least, Mr. Casey Bolak, principal of Crocker Elementary School and his team.
Hey, team. Everybody, thanks for having us. I know you're excited to see a bunch of the same similar-looking charts, but I will do my best to, to keep you entertained. Casey Bolak, principal here at Crocker. I have my team with me.
Emily Mantilla, assistant principal.
And I'm Erin Clark, the student program support administrator.
Very lucky to have these two on my team as well as everybody at the Crocker building. We talk about culture a lot at Crocker and we talk about culture here all the time. And I think it's one of the most important things as a leader that I can do is to have a great culture in our building. And so it's something that I concentrate on and that we as a team concentrate on and we're lucky to have. I would say the best clerical nurse, teaching interventionist, custodials, cafeteria, working crew in the city, but I'm biased. So we will move on. So here's our fantastic, I don't know if any of you know, but there's something big happening behind Crocker. There's a lot of activity. This is just a, a couple pictures of the, one of the latest big events. You may notice some people that recognize a few people in that picture. But this was our topping off ceremony held a couple of weeks ago, oh, actually in mid-October, where we put up one of our final beams at the new Crocker Elementary School building that everybody now believes me is happening and is literally 19 feet off of our building right now. It is there and we're having a, a good time watching it grow. Like if it's, if you haven't seen it yet, swing in. I'll extend the invitation, just like Principal Tingas did. This is something to see. There's no fields back there anymore. There's, it's, it's impressive. And to see how quickly it's gone and to see, to be honest with you, how, how nervous I was to work with people that are constructing, like, I'm just building a building and, you know, you're doing your school thing. But they have been, the people at Fontaine Brothers, SARM Architecture, you know, Colliers have been amazing to work with, understanding that we have a school happening right in front of this well over $70 million construction project of 630 students. They're able to work with me every day on deliveries, on when trucks can and cannot go. Hey, we have to run an Alice drill. We have a fire drill coming. I need access to this road. They are available and they've been great. And we're looking forward to getting that school done. It's, it's still a little bit of a ways off, but it's happening. So it's exciting. So we'll get into all the exciting news here, but we have made substantial progress towards our goals when it comes to MCAS. We're at 53% and a 34 accountability percentile. It's, this is good news for us because I don't know if you, I mean, I know everybody understands that we went through redistricting, but at the elementary level, McKay went through some real redistricting, changing all grade levels. But at Ryangold and here at Crocker, we lost our kindergarten students and added another MCAS testing grade with fifth grade. And so we used to just be third and fourth. And so adding a whole fifth grade, added a whole grade level as well as a science MCAS. So it was a, a brand new experience for us. And so to stay in this area, to, to get these numbers, we're extremely excited about, okay? That being said, I know this is our sort of, this is the report card section of it. And you can tell up with English, English Language Arts, that's our area to grow. And it's mostly with our achievement scores. We made some great growth with our, with overall, with both English and math. Exciting things happening when it comes with our English language learners as, as well as our chronic absenteeism as with all the schools. But there's definitely work to do, but we're excited about where we're at. But I don't want to have to go. You guys have been through these charts. If there's specific questions, we can, we can get to those. If we look at our achievement for ELA, this is, you know, where we're, where we dropped. We, we both have, you know, path forwards and recovery paths here, which I think was explained. You know, but our overall achievement, you know, for all our students dropped. You know, I, there's a, there's a multitude of reasons. Maybe part of it is adding the fifth grade and adding a whole, you know, 100 plus more students into that assessment calculation. But we, we know we have to do better. And so we, a lot of the same things that you've heard my colleagues say, we've implemented as well. We're doing integrity walks, really pushing through our high-quality instructional materials with inter-reading, where we're pushing our Title One staff to really do our OG in some fluency groups in the morning. So that's Orton Gillingham, which my colleagues spoke about, as well as just really focusing in on the pedagogy and the teaching and learning and how to give effective, critical feedback. So that's stuff that we're doing as a district and within our building. Some exciting, some, like it's, I wouldn't say exciting news, is that we're, you know, we really are concentrating on that feedback. So for me, you know, this is my 11th year in a district and I'm actually surprisingly still going into my sixth year here as a principal, but most of my career's been an assistant principal or in that role. And so for me, that behavior and the instructional, the, the behavior stuff was easy, the instructional stuff has been harder for me to get to. And so I feel like we're getting better and better as it, as a team, but myself personally as well. And so we're working towards it, you know, reading books, doing the trainings, trying to do everything that we can. So, so ELA, plenty of room for growth here for us. Our achievement in math, you know, we had some improvement overall. You know, an exciting subgroup here is our, our Ls or our former Ls, where we had exceeded our target. You know, we, we work really hard at an inclusion model and a co-teaching model at Crocker. There's a lot of access to grade level curriculum for all our students, including our Ls. We're excited, we are able to add another English learning, an ELL teacher to our staff this year. We're still looking for one, so I'll answer that question. We're looking for one of those as well. And we're looking for a special education teacher there as well, paras, subs, you know? Take a look on the website. Anybody out there in TV land, we need your help. So please come and see us at Crocker. Stop by first, we'll show you the building. So, but there's a lot of good stuff when it comes to our math that we're really excited about. We do have more familiarity with the program, even though we moved to Eureka squared, we were using Eureka for a multitude of years before that. So it's more of a tweak with some digital elements to it. So we've, our teachers felt more comfortable with it. And so we're, we're happy with these scores, but still plenty of work left to do here. And something else that we did as a district is really add the Title One Math Interventionist last year, which is so helpful for our kids at the earlier grades with number cents, really getting that foundational work in so they can attack some of those tougher problems when they're in third, fourth and fifth grade. So that's our achievement in math. So our growth, our growth was, was pretty good. We wanted to be between 40 and 60, right? You get over 60, you're exceeding the targets. And so, you know, we have some typical growth, even, even though we didn't have our highest achievement scores that we would look for. So, you know, there's, there's still work in specific with our students with disabilities. You know, there's, we did hire another special ed teacher this year compared to last year, but we still are short one. So we could use more of that. And that's just going to offer more, more ability to kind of have that more co-teaching and things along those lines. So for our math growth, you can see we, we did even better with our Ls and former Ls. We even got over that 60 mark barely, but we did it and exceeded their typical growth, which is what we really want to push for across all subgroups because we want to accelerate that learning still. And that's some COVID language, coming out of COVID language where we're accelerating the learning and we're, we're working towards that because our goal is really to get to that 60 level. So, you know, students with disabilities, still, it's typical growth, but it's low and it's our lowest growth, lowest growth area here in math. So it's still a concentrated... So it's still a concentration of ours and we're going to keep attacking it when it comes to that. Here are access scores. These are our students, our multi-language learners, and we had some really great improvement. We're excited about that. You know, our, our, our multi-language learning team, our L team is, is great. The access test happens in January. I think, I think it's 37, 38 days away. I got those emails, right? So like we, we know it's coming, right? We're counting down. And so, you know, these are, this is an assessment for those students that really concentrate on their speaking, listening, writing, and reading. And so we're, we're working on those skills constantly while having them have access to the grade-level curriculum and just trying to find those entry points so they can get there and accelerate that learning. So some good news there when it comes to access. Like my colleagues, this is, you know, I won't bore you with this, but this is just work. This is what it is. Our team, front office, guidance, and our teachers and our interventionists, like everybody that is with the kids on a day-to-day basis does this work. It's a culture. It's, it's hard. We have monthly awards, weekly announcements, you know, bulletin boards up with the attendants where this is a conscious effort to get the kids to school. And we're excited that we're exceeding our targets and we're going to look to keep bringing it lower and lower. So our, our goals, we, I wanted to make sure that I was clear and that they align with our district strategic plan as well. They're very similar to my colleagues because, you know, as a, as a district, this is a goal of ours, right? We, we're working together to get to the same goals. So we, we talk about high-quality Tier One instruction with learning targets and success criteria. We talk about our positivity project, which we started last year, which is an SEL, Social and Emotional Learning Curriculum that we do every morning. We have announcements every morning after we do the pledge. We have a student who's our resident meteorologist, Kenzo. Shout out to Kenzo every day. He lets us know what the weather's going to be. But our positivity project is, is a way to really have a systematic, common language for our social and emotional learning throughout the school. You know, we talk about our increase of sense of belonging and welcoming and belonging with our, with our staff through some surveys and listening to them and building that culture. We have a strategic use of our resources and, you know, like I said, we're short a special ed teacher. We're short an ESL teacher. So as a, as an instructional leadership team, as an admin team, we work hard at figuring out how to align those resources, what we have with utilizing the data with the students in front of us every day and how are we going to get them in front of as many kids as possible in the most systematic way. And that goes for Title I teachers, which we're also short of Title I reading interventionist, if anybody knows one. You know, and, and the last two really come kind of together with our families. You know, that sense of belonging, we did a survey at the beginning of the year as well as during our open house and really have as many events and community-wide and open-door type policies as we can. You know, we just had our Halloween dance last week and it was busy, to say the least. We had a blast. It was a lot of fun. A lot of great costumes, but a lot of smiles. We sold out of pizza very quickly. Like it was just, it was great to really get everybody back at Crocker. You know, we, we talked about it last year where we were telling families that they couldn't come to school for a while. And now they're starting to really believe us that they can come back. And so we're getting more and more people, more and more events, and it's going well. I think our open house was the most well-attended that I've seen in years and the dances was, was awesome. So, and then we're working, we're going to be working with the high school. We're going to be working with all kinds of our community partners, but the one I wanted to try to focus on is we, we've had a good relationship with the high school in bringing in either National Honor Society students or students that are looking to be teachers in that program to come in and hang out. They are right down the street. They get out of school a little early, come on down, spend an hour with some fourth graders, some fifth graders, or if you're looking that early at, you know, we, we have the classrooms and the students that would love to see them. And so I'll, I'll, I'll say this to any high school student, you know, let me know if you want to swing into Crocker. We'll make it happen. We'll set you up with an internship, a mentorship. Our students need them. Our, our teachers love them and it would, it goes a long way to helping our kids. So, yeah, I think that's it.
Questions for Mr. Bolak and his team. Rosemary.
Are you surviving with the retirement of Mrs. Jeffries?
No, I'm not. I am not surviving. As a quick announcement, Project Peace is in year 36 tomorrow. So see you guys all there tomorrow morning at 9:30. We will, we are still continuing with that amazing learning experience. So, and Ms. Jeffries works in our after-school program still. She couldn't leave. So we get to see her at least twice a week and then I've seen her a lot last week and this week. Yeah, we, we're surviving, but it's hard.
Oh, Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
Just, I guess it's a question for everybody presented today. I know as principals you sit in on the cabinet, but do you, as elementary school principals, do you all meet as a, as a smaller subgroup to discuss what's going on in your school? What's working? What are you doing to address this issue, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do a lot of that. Some of it's district-based.
Right.
Where we come together at least once a month as like principals and we've had time to like go and do some, you guys go talk about what you need to talk about. But I mean, everybody has my cell phone number and I have all their cell phone number too. And so there's times during the day and there's times on the weekends and, you know, I think there's a great working relationship throughout the district. I think, we talked about it, like Hannah talked about it, feeling supported. You know, I think, like I, I can, Hannah comes over to my school and does some integrity walks with me. I've hung out with some kindergarten classrooms and teachers already this year. And so support is an understatement. We have a lot of it, not just from the district, but with each other. And it's, it's been very helpful this year, so it's been good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Yous? Nope, no questions? Anyone else?
I would just say Casey, keep up the good work that you're doing at Crocker.
Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Bolak.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all my administrators. I know it's a late night. It is seven, almost 7:40. You are free to leave and make your way home. We'll see everyone tomorrow morning, bright and early. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. All right, moving forward, a couple more things this evening. For our budget items, we have a donation to our science director and specifically South Street Early Learning Center from Hollis Hill Farm in the amount of 90 pumpkins, estimated value of $450. The pumpkins were provided to each pre-K and K classroom at South Street Early Learning Center for observations, comparisons, and experiments for STEM Week. And then we also have six grants to accept this evening. The first grant is our 21st Century Grant, which is in the amount of $394,334. That provides our elementary schools with after-school programming. Our second grant is our Title I grant in the amount of $2,881,542, which supports ELA and math remediation at all our schools. That's specifically our Title I intervention staffing. Title II-A in the amount of $282,558, which will provide a portion of our literacy and math initiatives, professional development, and our mentoring and induction program facilitator. In addition to that, we have Fund Code, it's out of order, I apologize, Fund Code 309, which is Title IV, in the amount of $195,533, which provides support around well-rounded education opportunities for students, safe and healthy students, and also effective use of technology. And last but not least, for our title grants, we have Title III in the amount of $154,791 in support of our English language learners in Fitchburg. And then the last acceptance for our grant is our McKinney-Vento Grant in the amount of $20,000, which supports our homeless student population in the district.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Something before, the McKinney-Vento Grant, if we could have that on our next resource meeting.
Yep.
I'd like to talk about, you know, the compensation for their people working in the schools, doing work on the McKinney-Vento Grant. And they no longer compensate it, and I would like to talk about that.
Sure. All right, and our policy items. Mr. Horgan, do you want to update them? Or I can do that. I know you came in late. We didn't have a chance for you to report out during.
Yeah, no preference. If you want to take us through it, that'd be great.
Okay, great. So we have two updates this evening. The first one is to our attendance at Fitchburg High School, number 5112. We made revisions and we removed the attendance buyback procedures and the loss of course credit due to absenteeism and replaced it with what you have before you, the attendance protocol for students with excessive absenteeism. That's up for first reading this evening. And then the second.
On attendance policy, I have questions. Well, two things I had asked at that last meeting, something about makeup, students who, and there's, still there's nothing in here about makeup policy at the high school. And we discussed, and the other, again, I'm going back, I'm, you know, you know me, I'm old school. The class cut procedure, I don't agree with it at all. It has down here, if a student cuts class, first cut, teach a conference with student. Second cut, teach a consequences and documented parent and guardian communication. And third cut, referral to administration. Now, as a former assistant principal in the high school, I checked every class cut that took place and those, a student who cut class at a minimum received detention. If a student cuts a class, where are they? Where did they go? Did they leave the building? We're responsible for the students when they're in school. And if they're cutting class, they're unaccounted for and we should know where they are. And if they cut class, then an administrator should be checking on, where are they? Where did you go? What did you do? Were you in the building? Did you leave the building? And for the, if you got six classes, you basically can take six cuts, one in each class, and you're going to have a teacher conference. And the second one would be, your parents would come in. I'm still the old school, you cut class, you get detention. And I want to know where you were and what you were doing. And that's a good time you find out if there was any vandalism in the school or on the property. And so that's, I, I don't like that part.
So I don't think there has been any changes made to the class cut procedure based on the previous policy, Mr. Roach. That's been the procedure, being the former high school principal, that's been the procedure for several years, correct?
Probably about, I would say, at least six or seven.
Okay.
I will say to your point, Mr. Stevens, when, if a student cuts class, they are addressed by the, by the teacher and the grade-level assistant principal, and now that they have Dean there as well, they are doing that, but I think your point around making sure it's articulated in, in the policy is clear. I would also say, no, there is a school in the student handbook section about makeup work, which is clear about if you miss a day of work, miss a day of school, you're allowed at least that equal amount of time to complete the work because it might be necessary to meet with the teacher, especially if you missed a, a critical lesson, a complex content or concept or something like that. So the teachers typically extend it, but it's at least that amount of time. So if you miss a day, you have at least that amount of time beyond the day that you come back. If you miss two days, you have at least two days to get, you know, the work turned in that you might have missed because, you know, with seven classes or six classes, it could pile up.
I would just like to see that school committee policy so that it's system-wide and it's not, you know, any discretion put up to teachers or.
Yeah, that, that, that rule is not a policy, is right in the handbook. That could be plucked right out and placed into the policy pretty easily, I think.
And then, Mr. Stevens, we did bring up the makeup work. Yep. And when we discussed that at the policy meeting, there was discussion about putting that in the handbook.
Yeah.
Because there's nothing in there right now about makeup work in the handbook.
Right.
We talked about that.
This is the second time we've had this, this policy up this year. I remember you had that comment the last time we brought this in, I think, last school year, and we had that discussion like you just mentioned, and I was told that that, the buyback wasn't something for this policy, it was the student handbook. So that's, in regards to the other comments about class cuts, I think your comments are well-founded. Putting a mandatory detention for the first cut in the policy, we can have a discussion about that in the general committee if, if the committee would like. I don't think that's, I, I wouldn't want to have that as a bottom line in terms of finding out where they were, why did they miss class? I think a teacher conference with the student addresses that. I think having, like you were meeting with them yourself as principal, that's a lot of meetings, considering the chronic absenteeism and so on. I also just want to note, in a broad stroke, you know, a lot of the progress that we've seen around the district with chronic absenteeism has been from positive incentive programs, rewarding good attendance. We haven't seen any policies that these schools have taken place that has a, a broad-stroke detention for when they miss class or if they miss a day or so on, so forth. So I don't know if that's really, you know, in line with the current progress that we're making in a broad sense. I, I, I think this covers it, but if we want to have a bigger discussion about that, we can.
I'm not saying, Mr. Thog, I'm not saying you have to give them a detention.
Okay.
But somebody needs to know where they were that period. Parents send the kid to school.
Yeah.
Expect them in class.
Yep.
Where were they for an hour?
Yeah, and if the first cut is, if, if the teacher conference is the result of that, I would assume.
Well, maybe, maybe not.
Would you expect that to be part of the conversation of where were you?
I mean, that could be part of the conversation, but I would, I would like to know where that student was, whether it's through the teacher or one of the assistant principals who has that class. You know, that, that student has to be accountable for their time that they're in school because the parent wants to know they're in school for six hours. And I know we used to have kids leave the high school. It's not, not as easy now where the high school is, but at Academy Street, they were easy to come down here and go to the restaurant or whatever, you know, and so it, you know, something should happen to a student while he's out of school and the parent thinks they're in school, you know, and nobody knows that they're missing. I mean, who's, the teacher doesn't record the cut, you know, whatever.
Yeah, so is there any commentary that we can have on the procedure? The policy says teacher conference with the student, but there's a bigger context around that of what actually happens when a student cuts class. Is there any extra color that we can add to this picture, Mr. Thompson, in terms of the parents' knowings, particularly his points?
Yeah, I think for sure, one of the, I can only respond to the initial meetings that we had with Dr. Braga, and so he really did paint a really clear picture about the attendance procedures and, you know, pretty much what his administrative team does in order to address any sort of absences, you know, phone calls home, communication with family, following up on attendance meetings. So it really does seem like they have a process with record-keeping on that particular, in that particular area. Certainly we can follow up with, with that, but I do recall that that was a major focus that he addressed in the initial, you know, conversations around this policy.
I, I would just like to see somewhere it's going to be accountable, that, you know, if a student misses a period, that somebody's going to know about it. So that if something happens, we're held accountable for.
Yeah, I, I mean, for sure, I know that attendance has to be tracked at every single, in every single period. So it does come up. If a student is absent from a class, but they are present in school, you know, our system tracks that. And so we would definitely know that in, in real time.
And I, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Well, and the expectation is that the parent guardian is informed if a student cuts class even the first time. So that exists in other places. And if, and if the feeling is that that's an important, and it is. I mean, a parent should know that this is going on because they're the best, well, they're the partner, and in many ways, the best partner to help turn that situation around. If a student's struggling, if they're making poor decisions, if they have other things that are getting in the way, you know, the parent and the teacher and the dean or the vice principal, whoever it is that's specifically working on that, when they work together, it's going to turn it around much quicker than if it's a single individual dealing with it. So again, that exists in other recommendations and communication around if a student is cutting class, that you need to let the parent guardian know. So I think that's a, an important, you know, conversation to continue to try to get it into the policy.
And then, one of the things that Dr. Braga did talk about during the policy subcommittee is how they are now meeting weekly to actually review this data around attendance and class skips and coming together to put some supports in for kids. So I know they actually are monitoring this on a weekly basis.
So that would be my concern, if they do something, talk about the class cuts. I mean, student shows up the homeroom and then he takes off. Is that six class cuts or is that an absenteeism?
Yeah. Well, they'd be leaving school grounds potentially too.
And that's another...
Some other things, you know.
That's another thing, leaving school grounds without permission.
So I don't want to have these comments dismissed. Is there a proposition that you have to add to the policy, or do we want to, is it sufficient as it is?
I, I'd just like to see it cleaned up a little bit, you know. I don't have a problem with the, the policy. It's a good policy, but I'd like to see a little cleaning up on the, on the class cuts.
In terms of what you just mentioned, clear communication with the teachers, notification, with the parents' notification and administration?
I just think some, the parent should know if a, if a student cuts a class.
Hmm.
And, you know, I mean, if he cuts the first two classes after they've checked in and he's gone for two hours, you know, and then he gets back in, you know...
And like, and like they...
Where's he been for two hours?
Right.
That, that's, to me, is not just a, a teacher conference. That's the assistant principal looking into it.
Yeah. And from what they said, it sounds like there's universal practices that are applied here that aren't mentioned in this policy.
Yeah.
But you want to see mentioned so we can hold that accountable.
I'd just like to see something, you know, mentioned in there so that there's some follow-up, so that parents are aware that their child may have left the school for half the day or, you know, three periods, what have you done, three hours, where were they? You know.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Dave.
That's good feedback. I'm happy to take this back to the subcommittee.
Yeah.
But that's, that's up to the general committee if, what their prerogative is.
I don't know if anybody else has anything else to...
I would agree. I would agree that we look at it again, tighten that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's bring it back to the next policy meeting.
Let's do that.
Get a vote on that, right?
Certainly.
When it comes up.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, the other change to policy, I apologize, I lost my place. Apology for, ah, sorry, apology, policy, for the physical restraint policy, 5712. There was a few language updates that we had to make based on law. In addition to that, that looks like it's on the last page in highlights around prohibiting medication restraint, mechanical restraint, and prone restraints. And then, the next line highlighted talks about process for obtaining principal approval for a timeout exceeding 30 minutes. So those were the two policies. And then, everything else, I think we discussed except, there's one action item I would like Jeremy Roach to quickly speak about, action item 23315. Mr. Roach?
Yes, we reviewed 23315, which has proven the super intense recommendation to use funds to acquire property on Academy Street in order to develop green space for the Longjo Middle School site. This is exclusively in response to student requests. At the civic day, the eighth graders are required and 12th graders are required to complete civics project, Action Civics Project. Middle Schools did an amazing job, and, and they were highlighted at, at an event in May at Memorial. And many of the Longjo student civics projects addressed aspects of the condition of the school. And, and one of the major themes was the fact that they have no green space. They have no place, like the other schools, to go outside. And so, one thing that we have done is worked with the assessor's office in the city of Fitchburg here, as well as the city solicitor and a few other departments in the city. And we're excited to report that at the last city property meeting, which was last Monday, the city has transferred over 130 Academy Street, which is a vacant lot owned by the city, to the Fitchburg School Department. So we're excited about that. And we are working, and it's, that's at the end of Academy Street on the corner of Spring Street. So if you know the area. Academy has essentially Longjo and then three parcels. And so 130 is now Fitchburg Public Schools. And we will work with the Department of Conservation, who has worked, will help us with greening the Gateway Cities Grant. And Longjo is directly in the catchment zone for those grants. And we feel really confident we'll be able to get that, that could provide up to $100,000 to $150,000 to add to that space. 120, we've been working with 120 Academy Street.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So is it contiguous from the school proper?
130 is...
Up to Spring Street?
No, 130 is at the end. 120 now, which is what this particular action item is about specifically, is for sale. So we were alerted by the assessor's office. So this is just to, to help us to explore if that's a possibility, to, to enter into a purchase for that property. It won't happen again, most likely. And that's the one directly adjacent to Longjo's parking lot. If you're facing the school, there's two parking lots on the sides, there's one behind the school too, on the corner of High Street and Pleasant. But these are the two that are adjacent to the schools. The one to the right, if you're facing the school, there's a property there. We would like to explore the possibility of purchasing that property. That would then allow us a much bigger space on what remains of Academy Street to potentially develop, as I said, the kids were very adamant about it. We want to be able to have some kind of field or green space like the other schools do.
Mr. Roach, would you go by how this came about, our resource, our building needs meeting?
Yeah. We had amazing presentations by the eighth grade students at Longjo. We met that meeting at, at Longjo Middle Schools Library. And the teachers at, at Longjo, the eighth grade teachers, a number of them had, had a, we had at least two to three presentations that night. And, and they focused on, on this topic, you know, about how they really feel like this would help with not only their school, but the beautification of the area. And it could be a project that they continue, you know, if we were able to obtain a vacant lot or a building that, that went up for sale and, and have it as a space, that it could be something that the students are involved with in terms of another civics project for how do we develop that space. So we have 130 now, which is great. And, and, you know, we were informed recently by these various groups in the city who are also really supportive of this idea, that, hey, this one's for sale as well. So, so we would work with, if, if approved to pursue it, doesn't mean it would happen. Real estate's complicated stuff. It's almost as complicated as some of that MCAS data you're looking at. But not that, not that complicated. But it would allow us to pursue it with the city solicitor's office, who would help us with sort of procedural aspects to see if it is something that we could do.
What about the abandoned school?
The abandoned...
Oh, that's, that's...
Not, not BF Brown.
Academy, that's being rehabbed also.
Yeah, the annex, the old high school annex is being turned into 12 apartments by New View and about 1,000 other organizations, which is exciting. That's where I started teaching, right down in that building over there. So, yeah, I think, again, we're only doing this because the students said, this is something that's important for this school from our perspective. So we've been looking for about, you know, six months now, often, you know, for, for this type of opportunity. So this would allow us to pursue the opportunity.
This, this is coming from our students.
Yeah.
This is the only school that doesn't have a dedicated green space, and that will change it.
Sure.
Yep.
They did a very good job presenting. They were excellent, yeah. They were remotely, but...
Yeah, Jim was, Jim was there.
Tom, I think Tom was there too. You were there for it?
Yeah, Tom, Mr. Hughes was there, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And what we hope to do, if we can do this, is we will invite those students back when we complete it, and they will be there at the dedication of the new school playground or open space area.
It'd be nice if they came before us too, with their presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, they actually have to do some type of civics assignment by, I think it's 12th grade. So I'd like them to be actually engaged in that work too, like a continuation somehow, if we could get that to happen. So it's exciting. All right, back to you.
Thank you.
Did we, what about, are you done reviewing the different numbers? What about number 315, the recommendation for funds on Crocker Field? I'd like to discuss that.
Go ahead.
Oh, right now? Okay.
Sure.
Well, I wanted to ask if the 170,000, I'm going to round it out, okay? 170,000 is specifically only for turf bidding or whatever it is, or having funds? Or does it include other items at Crocker Field as well?
It would be other items for sure.
Just to go through the breakdown.
Yeah, the, the 169 is not necessarily just to be, just to the bid costs. It would be to help address the, the gap in cost to be able to go out to bid. And that, that project is not just turf. It's, it's a brand-new track. It's all-new lights, including quite a bit of security lighting. And really, this project, I think, is a joint effort. I think that was alluded to earlier. It is a joint effort. It's a joint effort between the city, the school system, and, and the NFL grant, which is a quarter million dollars, in addition to the Crocker Restoration Committee, which has worked for, my understanding, 19 years.
19 years.
To, to, to generate donations from various companies, from alumni, and, and a wide variety of folks. So there has been a volunteer building committee comprised of coaches and the athletic director and some other folks around that are knowledgeable about certain aspects of a track and field and that type of thing. So we had a few of those meetings in, in the early fall. And some of the additional recommendations were things like making sure that you tufted the lines. So that means that they're not painted, but they're actually stitched into the field so they don't fade over time. That would also include the logo for the school. And, and again, if you look at the difference between one that's painted by about this time in an athletic fall versus, versus, you know, at the beginning of the year, it's, it's, it's no comparison. So, so the stitching makes it so that it's always like it was for the first day, at least for a long period of time. Amongst other things, additional conduit lines, so that will help with FATV access, added electricity over the years, added sound, if we want to do that, to be able to do that. That's all under the field when the site's happening. So these recommendations were then added in, and so it did increase the cost a little bit of what's the estimated cost, which is 3.2 million.
Is it set in stone that we need turf? Because I think that's a, a valid subject to review.
So I, I think the turf, the specifications that will be built into our bid will, will include the concept, will, will include testing for chemicals. That was, that's been something that's been relatively recent. So even turf fields that were built last summer, that were installed last summer, did include specification language around PFAS, you know, those eternal chemicals that are in everything, in addition to things like lead, which could be found. So, so we'll make sure in our document, in, in our bid document, that those will, will be lower than what's, what's allowable by, you know, the EPA or other organizations that govern that.
But if, if the trend is to outlaw that, that, why would we rush into doing that?
See, I don't know if that's the case. The vast majority of...
I, I thought we should look into it.
Yeah.
Because it seems timely that we are getting information.
Sure.
Injuries have been more severe.
In the NFL, yes.
Yes.
I mean, there are, there are some studies that show the NFL would like to move away from turf fields.
Yes, and why?
They're, they're at an extreme competition level. When similar studies are done at high school levels, which is a different competition level, different sized people, different speed of play, different rate of collision, we're, we're purchasing a shock pad for $133,000 in this, in this project to increase player safety in all sports. Not just football, but soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, and anything else that would participate on the field. A lot of track, you know, practice will be on the field as well. So though there are studies that, again, talk about all the NFL players that have had injuries, the NFL also has an incomparable level of ability to maintain and upgrade a grass field that the studies that have been done would never include a high school field. Because high school fields are overcompacted, grass ones. They're not even, meaning like there's different dips in the fields that happen over time. And if you ever want to take a walk on Crocker Field, you can experience that. An NFL, an NFL team or a high-level Division One, you know, type of team like Alabama or Ohio State or something like that, would have millions of dollars dedicated to the maintenance of that grass field. I'm pretty confident we would not.
I think St. Bernice has a, a grass field, don't they?
I, I didn't hear that.
St. Bernice has a grass field?
There's plenty of, there's plenty of places that do. Most of the mid-watch, we're in the Midland-Watch Chusett League.
Yeah.
The majority of those, those schools do have a synthetic turf.
Well, my, my point being that I, I can tell that you're sold entirely on, on this.
I'm sold, I'm sold on more kids having access, which is what this will do. Not, not people being able to walk around on it from the community necessarily, though that's a nice benefit. More students be, they can hardly get on the field now because of the condition of the, of the grass.
I would like to see, I would like to see that reviewed and get some, some...
I'll send you a bunch of different things. Some of them noting that Boston has banned them in public parks. That, that is true. Not necessarily in, in schools or things like that, but...
But it's a growing thing. It's a coming thing. It wasn't around here, we wouldn't have talked like this five years ago, I don't think.
Uh, I mean, they're in the third generation of them. And going back to like AstroTurf, that was in the 70s. I mean, they're certainly, they're not new. The, the technology increases every year. And the focus is on, again, some of the chemical components to, to make sure they're safe, but also the safety, the player safety, the athletics, you know, the athletic safety is a paramount factor, which, again, I'm glad to send any of that information along to you for sure. And there'll be some of the, some of the things that note, you know, the NFL injuries and that type of thing, for sure.
I've heard, I've actually heard commentaries on the radio myself, and I've read in the newspaper. So if you want to say something, yes?
If, if we were to keep a grass field, we would play four to five football games on it a year, all right? And that would be boys' football games. All of the other teams would not use it. They would be using the turf fields, artificial turf fields, which they are now at Game On up in West Fitchburg. Our, our girls, field hockey, soccer, lacrosse, our boys' soccer, lacrosse, they're all using the field turfs now. using the field turfs now up at Game On. And so the only people who would still be on the grass would be the boys' football team, because the field cannot support other teams using it. It was about four years ago, it was just like mud. That's all the field was, was mud, and it looked awful. And if you, if you would go over to Crocker Field now and, and look at it, and it looks nice, walk the field, and you will find all the holes and where people are, you know, they break their legs and turn their ankles and a lot of other injuries, and it's just not even. And so all of our kids, it's like Mr. Roach said, it's all of our kids who are not benefiting from Crocker Field. The turf, the track no longer can be used for track meets. We can't, we can't hold track meets, county track meets or state meets there, it just doesn't support it.
Well, I'm happy to hear you, you give the rationale for what you're, what you're telling me, the information. It's just odd timing that this other information is breaking, that some of them are being banned, you know?
I haven't, I haven't seen that information where they're, they're being banned. There may be research going on now, but I, I do not see 200 turf fields in Massachusetts being torn out at $2 million apiece. I don't, I don't see that.
Mr. Roach, did we have a presentation by Gail?
Yes.
Regarding this?
Was it two years ago or last year?
I think, I believe it was last school year.
I don't think it was two years, right.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was last school year.
And where was that, where was that presented? Was it here?
Yeah, she, I think she looped in through Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the main rep that we work with.
We have also put in thousands of dollars into the field to just maintain it with Gail and the place down Whalen, just keeping it usable, you know, and 169,000 is just a fraction of, I've been on the Crocker Field Commission for many, many years, and we've put several million dollars into the field, and the whole, the whole park, and the clubhouse, just put in new stands. We've, we've done.
Well, it's a gem of the city, so this is, it's a gem of a city.
It's on, it's on the historic register, yeah, I mean.
But I just, I just thought it was worthy of a second glance, a second look at it to know what we're doing, rather than five years from now find out we had it and we changed it, you know?
Well, I don't think it'll ever go back. I, I just don't see that happening. Like I say, 200 fields in the state, not, not going to happen.
And just to clarify, Crocker Field is owned by the school department.
It is, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, it's strictly, the school department is not the city.
Yeah.
It's owned by us and nobody else, and it's by the schoolchildren of Pittsburgh.
I make a motion, we, we, we vote on 23-315 at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. 23-315, approve the super intense recommendation use funds, 169,077 to fund the Crocker Field bid process. All in favor?
Hold, hold on one second.
Yes.
You said make a motion to approve 23315, that's not Crocker Field.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
No.
Sorry, this is the right one.
31, 314.
314.
314. All right, sorry, 23-314. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Can, before, can you, can, who made the motion? Can you amend your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to 314, 23314 instead of 23315.
315 is Crocker Field on my.
This is, it's revised, it's.
Revised, one, yep, yep. All right.
And first and seconded?
Seconded?
Seconded, okay.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
In opposition, one in opposition.
Got it.
Got it? Okay. What are we doing, the rest of them? Okay, we do the rest of them. Yeah. You want to make a motion?
Bundle.
Well, we need to, we're holding out, are we holding out the?
Attendance.
Attendance policy?
The attendance policy?
Yes.
We're returning that to the policy subcommittee, correct?
Right.
Okay, if we do, let's see. So we're going to do everything but that. Well, that's going to be a separate vote.
20, recommend that we bundle 23313, 23315, 23316, 23318.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous, thank you.
Motion to approve the bundle?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the bundle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now what? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have no need for executive session.
Sure.
Motion to adjourn.
All favor?
All favor?
Yeah, aye.
All right, all opposed, thank you. We have adjourned.